Good evening. Welcome to Town of Rutland Office of the Select Board meeting, regular meeting tonight, Monday, February 10th at 6:01 PM. We are in the Rutland Free Public Library in the lower level. We welcome you all, hereby call this meeting to order, and we have some special guests who are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Welcome, PAC 141. Hi.
Would you guys like to come up here in the front? Line up right there. With the flags this way, guys. We're not going to start until you guys start, all right? You guys start, we'll start.
Go ahead, start it, Isaac.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So much as we know that our scouts that are here tonight with us want to listen to us approve the minutes and the warrant, we're actually going to move right ahead. So, under petitions, applications, et cetera, we have a Cub Scout presentation, something about a Pinewood Derby. Welcome. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Sam Keefen, and I'm representing... Good evening. My name is...
Yeah, we can hear it. It's being picked up. It's all good.
Good evening. My name is Sam Keefen. I'm representing Rutland Cub Scout PAC 141. We're all here today to present a challenge to the Board of Selectmen to once again create and race a Pinewood Derby car for this year's race. We're also challenging Fire Chief Knipe, Director of Regional Communications Moretti, DPW Director Buckley, Town Administrator Michael Nicholson, and last year's winner Police Chief Monaco to participate and race against one another. This year's Pinewood Derby will be held on Saturday, March 14th, at Central Tree School with registration the evening before. We will provide all participants with rules and a car kit. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Nice job, Sam. Thank you.
Could I get a motion from the board? Do we accept this challenge?
Well...
I need a motion.
I would like to make a motion that the Board accepts your challenge for the second year in a row to participate in the Pinewood Derby.
Do I have a...
I will second that motion.
Is that for discussion?
For discussion.
We're going to second for discussion?
We're going to second for discussion.
Yeah. I want to know what our car might look like hypothetically.
Ladies and gentlemen, what did we do this year with the Select Board and myself having to do with the rocks? Big words, perambulation, remember? Raise your hand if you were involved in that. Well, then you might recognize this year's entry from this side, although if the other half of would like to participate, they may. I would like to introduce to the town the perambulator. The perambulator.
You sure you still want to second that?
That's very aerodynamic.
It's aerodynamic. Not saying that I was anticipating it, just hoping that we would be invited. It comes, well, we're told that we're under the special category, so weight limit might be waived. If that's the case, the town cornerstone is removable. It does come with the town key, remember that? A flag, Board of Selectmen, and I'm going to ask my fellow members of the Board to autograph this, and then it will be complete. So, challenge accepted, man. Thank you. We'll see you there.
We do. We have not accepted it.
Oh, okay. Oh, don't turn me down after all this.
He's relying on our vote.
Don't turn me down. I also asked that the Board sign.
We have a motion and a second on the table. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. The Chiefs and the DPW Director are on their own, as well as Director, as Administrator Nicholson, so...
We just want to say it's on.
Oh, it's on. It's on. So, you've heard it's on from everybody except the Police Chief, who of course won last year.
I shouldn't have tipped my cards.
We're postponing your review to see how this pans out.
How'd you know? Thank you very much, PAC 141. You are welcome to stay with us for the rest of our business meeting. You are also very welcome to leave and go home and eat dinner.
Yeah. I don't think you'd be entertained.
All right.
Yeah. Well, thanks for coming in.
Good night, guys.
Have a great night.
Thank you, guys.
All right, I'm moving on. Just to remind everybody, we did mention it to the scouts who know that they were live on TV tonight, but you can also go and see yourselves on YouTube, and it will be on Rutland Cable as well. You can watch this over and over, and I bet the cameras picked you up. All right. Thank you very much again. I am circling back. Can I get a motion to sign Treasury Warrant 17 and Payroll?
Motion to sign Treasury Warrant 17 and Payroll.
Second. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have some minutes.
Three seconds.
Anybody have a chance to take a look if we would like to approve them tonight, or they could be held one more week, one more meeting? Want more time to review them?
Motion to approve. Minutes is written for the meetings held on the 13th and 27th.
Okay, so that's a total of three. Thank you. Do we have any seconds?
Just that we have two for the 13th. One was a...
Public Works. Board of Public Works.
So, we're just going to do the second one at 6:44.
So, I think Mitch made the motion for all three. Are you okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. Is that a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Moving on. All right, we've done our petitions for the night, had our challenge presented to us. We're going to our Town Administrator update. Thank you.
Thank you. Secretary Elizabeth Chen from the Executive Office of Elder's Affairs and the Governor's Cabinet was here in Rutland today for just over two hours down at our senior center. Very productive time. Nancy, Kathy, Sue, the whole crew down at the senior center did a very good job just putting together a good event for the Secretary to just sit down, meet and talk with everyone there. I was really happy with how that went. And the Secretary is getting Nancy in touch with a couple groups of COAs out in the Berkshires. One who wanted to expand their exercise classes, so the town purchased exercise equipment, but it's all run by the local YMCA. I guess YMCA is now having a senior initiative to get out of their YMCA centers and into the senior centers to work with them there. So, the liability that would then fall to the YMCA and not the town because they're the ones who are operating the classes there. So, as a way to expand the exercise options there, that's a contact we now have, as well as with a group of 13 COAs out in the Berkshires that now have a regional transportation agreement with them where they share a bus there. She's getting that information there out to Nancy should the town look to see if that's something we want to do with the local, what she was at times because of the transportation issues that we've been having here. So, whether we go with it or not, it's a conversation we now have that we can take a look into. So, I thought that was really productive.
Good job, Mike.
Well, thank you. Like I said, I can't say thank you enough to the crew down at the COA for all the work that they did to get ready for today and the work that they do every day. Through the Safer Grant and through an open position we had with our retirement and funded position, we have our four new firefighters started this week, last week.
Four?
Yeah, so, yep. Three were through the grant, and then like I said, one was replacing someone who left. So, Mark, Erin, Joe, and Sarah had a great first week, and they got their second week in training this week, and then will go on their full-time rotations come Sunday. So, you'll see them around town now, too.
Chiefs, these are firefighter EMTs?
Two are firefighter permanent, and two are firefighter EMTs.
We'll be starting our budget meetings with the Finance Committee starting on Thursday. The budget requests from the department heads, again, just as a reminder, I sent them out saying for an expected 10,000 population so that we could build up to that, and for a realistic next year, we're not at 10,000 yet, so what could we work with? Excuse me. It looks like right now our initial number is we're ballpark 22,500,000. Should, there needs to be a little bit trimming there to bring it closer towards the 22 million number. But it's a lot better off than I expected to come in when we sent out a thing saying for a population of 10,000. So, we're not, knock on wood, we've got a good early start to the budget season.
Great.
Thank you. And just as some information to get out there, the Mass Municipal Association will be doing their quarterly legislative breakfast throughout the Commonwealth. Should any of the Board members like to attend, let Laura or I know when we can certainly sign you up to those. It's February 28th, and then the two Fridays after that at 8:00 in the morning at different locations across the state with different legislators talking about things that are going on in the State House, the Governor's Budget, and things of those nature there.
The closest one was Southern Worcester County, right?
Charlton. Yeah, Charlton on the 28th. There's also a meeting on March 14th held by the newly rebranded Select Boards Association to discuss small towns and cybersecurity challenges. So, for anyone who'd like to attend that, also feel free to let Laura or I know. The last thing I'd like to bring up is just an update that this coming Friday, Joe and I will be meeting back with the Department of Conservation and Recreation to continue our sewer transportation and treatment negotiations. Outside of the negotiations, I provided you all with a copy of some correspondence with DCR unrelated to our negotiations regarding the rate at which they charge the town for usage for you guys to look at in case we want to talk about that at the next meeting. On the top is a letter of support we've also received from Senator Gobi and Rep. Ferguson for talking with DCR on this issue.
Meetings this Friday?
Yes, to negotiate.
Okay. So, next meeting, let's do executive session. You can update us?
Yeah. But this again is just, this is regarding the bill payments for this year. This is not part of the negotiation, so that's why we're releasing that now for any questions later on, and that is my update. We, excuse me, one last thing is Joe and I spoke. We are officially over Snow and Ice Budget, so we'll be starting to deficit spend that and see how we go the rest of the season. But I do want to give a shout out to Joe and the DPW crew for the past two, three weeks of a lot of stuff falling out of the sky and getting out here and getting the work done.
Can I ask, just as a follow-up for that through the chair, why we're over?
Because we wildly under budgeted. Wild.
We wildly under budgeted?
On purpose. Because we haven't had money in the budget, and we know we can overspend it. And so, what happens is at the end of the fiscal year, typically the DPW department will look around, see what monies it can shuffle. Sometimes we would be taking it from reserve fund transfers. In some cases, some years, because there'd been a state emergency announced, we would get state funds as well. So, it has ultimately, you know, knock on real wood, worked out in the end. But yeah, we underfund that line item. I think Joe's well aware of it.
And I will say, too, one of the things that Joe and I are looking at this year is reconfiguring some of the line items in the budget. Right now, the town budgets, salt and sand purchases, and a little bit under claw blades, under the Snow and Ice Budget. But there's a lot more that could be related to Snow and Ice spending, wages, overtime, maintenance. So, Joe and I are looking to reconfigure some of the line items to show that a little bit of each does come from Snow and Ice. But it's the one line item by statute we are allowed to deficit spend just because you don't know how much is going to come out of the sky every year.
Kind of impressed you made it to February with the types of storms we've had, extended, challenging, just nonstop, right? 24-hour, 36-hour storms. Yeah.
I just want to echo what the Town Administrator said, that the crews have done a great job. And I can't, we'd be lost without them.
We really appreciate it.
Give them our thanks. Please.
I think, you know, I think in every community, almost every morning there's a storm, we're seeing, you know, spinouts, accidents. It's unavoidable. People need to be careful and recognize how challenging this has been this season and how the roads are not going to just get down to dry pavement, you know, the blink of an eye, no matter what we do. So, yeah, thank you. That was it?
Yep.
Thank you. All right. Yet, as usual, I'm going to jump because we have another guest who didn't bring us a challenge for a car that we have to make. So, Anita, come on up. We'll go jump to new business and do our presidential primary warrant.
First item is the warrant for the March 3 presidential primaries. So, there's two copies in case somebody's pen leaks, but I really only need one signed, copied, posted.
We'll sign both, just to be safe. Can I get a motion? Do you have phrasing for us or just the standard motion?
Nope, that's fine.
Thank you.
Whatever. It's just a motion.
I'll make a motion to sign the warrant for the 2020 presidential primaries.
Second.
And that is for the Tuesday, the 3rd of March 2020. Precincts open 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, our normal precinct locations. So, that's Naquag, the Rutland Public Library, and Precinct 3, also in the other portion of Naquag.
It's fast approaching.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fast approaching, great. And Wednesday, yes? Last day to register to vote.
Last day to register to vote is Wednesday. We have to stay open Mass General Law until 8:00, which isn't really realistic because almost everybody is registering to vote by online voter registration, which people can still do up until midnight on Wednesday. And if they do that, we get it electronically, and then a letter goes out from our office acknowledging that they're registered. So, actually, we've processed over 40s just online since Friday.
That's fantastic.
I think it's out in the news. But it's also changing political parties, so there's a lot, a lot of that going on. And the second item is Holly Haynes, Mass General Law's Chapter 51, I think Section 15 or something, requires that the Board of Registars be appointed in February and March to start an April one term. So, that's why it's not consistent with other appointments that the town does. And Holly, I think this will be, I think she's been on the Board of Registars since 2016. She's one of our Republicans. It's a balanced board with two Republicans and two Democrats. And she started when somebody resigned in 2016, and so she was around when we had, we were one of the lucky towns that got drawn to have the president, the audit following the presidential election. So, she survived that, and so if she's still willing to be on, it's a good thing. So, just need a motion to reappoint her.
Her card's...
It's stuck on the green folder. Thank you.
Motion to reappoint Holly Haynes to the Board of Registars?
It's a three-year.
To a three-year term.
And that'll expire July 1, 2023.
It's actually March 31st because it's, their term starts April 1st.
We'll print a new card.
All right. Yeah, that's okay.
Second.
And that's a motion for the clerk to sign. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Well, can I make a couple other election plugs?
Absolutely. Many you need to make.
We haven't publicized yet the schedule for the election schedule for the annual town election, but we will, should be getting that on the website soon. But I just wanted to let people know that we've decided that, determined that nomination papers are going to be available beginning Tuesday, February 25th. And we'd like to do a Tuesday because we're open until 7:00. So, if anybody wants to be the first kid on the block to get their papers, then they can get in. Besides that, we have the legislature also passed that we're doing early voting for the primary, and we are mandated to do early voting all of our open hours, which is Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 8:00 to 4:30, and then again on Tuesday, 8:00 to 7:00. But Damian and I discussed it, and we decided that we're going to open also on that Friday from 11:00 to 6:00, partially because the media is going to be all over, this is the last day to early vote, and if we're not open, then, you know. So, it's figured that that would be a service to the town, too. So, I think that's all I have.
So, just to revisit, Wednesday was the last day to register to vote in the primaries?
Mm-hmm.
Need to pick...
Or to change parties.
Or to change parties. They can vote almost immediately via early?
Starting the 20, it's, the early starts the 24th. It's just the last week of February.
Starting the 24th of February, absentee ballots?
Are available now.
Available now, which they would mail in or drop off in person?
They have to, we have to have an application form first, and we have to, they can vote in office, or we can't let anyone carry a ballot out to, like a family member, but we have to put it in the mail, and then they can be delivered back. So, we've done a lot of those also.
All right. And then on primary day, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, ballots open.
Yep.
All right.
It's going to be fun.
Just as another note, too, we believe that's the only election that's going to happen while school is in session this calendar year. So, we will have an extra officer at Naquag just to make sure, because the officers who are with the polling station have to be in the room where the polls are.
Okay.
So, since that officer has to be in the gym, we'll have another officer there just to make sure no one goes down the hall during the school day.
That's great.
And the other three elections are, May isn't in service day. We communicated with the district when I realized that the primary, September primary, they were looking at the first, and so they held off until they heard to determine that, so they're not going to start school till the second. So, and then November will be, November 3rd will be a holiday, too.
Yeah, it'll be a professional development day.
Right. Because they released their schedule three weeks ago, I think, the school district?
Yeah, yeah, it's been...
So, the date of the state primary will be the staff-only day, and then the first day for the students will be the day after.
Yeah, so that works.
Okay.
And we, and we actually, we, because I know that in September, the gym floor is pristine, and at the last town meeting, Damian and I kept looking at what Glenwood does, what they put on the floors. So, we actually found some money in our budget, and we ordered some for Naquag, just so we can put it, not to cover all, but our, just the tables, the check-in and check-out tables, because the chairs do scratch no matter what we've done putting things on. So, I think the principal there will be happy when she hears that.
That's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Anita. All right, I'm going to circle back. Is there anyone here for public comment? No? You want, you want to wait? I can hold, I can, I can come back again.
Dick Williams.
Aye.
Greetings. Just for, put the slot in your heads, that's all. Because of the ice storms that we've had lately, and one day I was out back of this library taking a look, we have a lot of pretty good-sized pine trees in this old cemetery. And I feel that it might not be such a bad idea, and I don't know where you're going to come up with money in order to try to get some of these trees down before they take out the tombstones and gravestones there. I feel that it'd be a, yeah, well, not only safety, but a cost-effective thing, because if you have to go back in and replace some of those or patch them or whatever, it's a pain. So, just want a thought to put in your head, maybe move some of these pine trees out here. Route 56, the tip. How's that coming along? You know, I was hoping to hear a little bit more about what might be happening. Is the town in, is there any right of ways that you need, that the town needs to be purchasing for this thing? Have you done anything about parking, you know, trying to get ahead of the game? Because if a tip comes up and they're not ready, there's an opportunity, maybe Rutland can jump in, ahead of, ahead of the game, if you're ahead of the, you know, of what's going on. But that's what I'm trying to throw at you, how you come along with it, number one. And number two, you know, if you can get some of the stuff taken care of ahead of time, all the better. So, and I'll leave it right there.
Joe, would you like to comment tonight on anything with the tip?
No.
Okay.
We have been in contact with our consultant. They're managing that work for us.
Okay.
And they updated both Mass DOT and regional planning with the best information we have at the time.
And I believe there's a meeting coming up, reviewing? Okay. What's the date on that? Do we know?
I don't know.
I don't either. I want to say it's in the next two weeks, though. It's coming up fast.
Yes, I know that I wasn't going to be around for it.
Okay. And I think, to your point, that's what's coming up. I think they're reviewing some of the projects to make sure they're shovel-ready.
We've already, at the transportation meeting, have voted to change our view.
Okay.
So...
All right. Thank you. That's it for tonight?
That's it.
Okay.
You want a whole list?
Why?
No.
You know.
Not to make Sean Moore, 3 Edson Avenue, during these meetings, a lot of abbreviations are thrown out, COA, TIPS, DOT. If you can clarify what those abbreviations are, sometimes people may not know what a tip is.
Fair, fair point. So, there's a Transportation Improvement Plan, and there's an agency that's based in Worcester that sort of runs the money and kind of brings it all together, federal, state, et cetera, money. And they're truly trying to help these communities working through these very large programs and projects that they have coming up. A really good example is 140, which encompassed at least three, right? Three towns when they, when they did that. So, there was just a lot of coordination, and that's hugely where CMNPO, CMRPC step in. Dick is such a resource for this. He's been going to these meetings for years. Yeah, so Transportation Improvement Projects?
Project.
Projects. There's a list. They go out five years, 10 years, 20 years. The more a town can show that it's ready, the better you are on your tip. Funding is always an issue because the town has to show good faith and show that it's got the funding available to get these started. And this Palmigusset project is really, I think, your baby at this point. Like, we should name something after you when it's all said and done, because, I mean, I think one of the first things he ever said to me 13-plus years ago was about the tip and where it was, and that's how long it has been. And we're actually at the end of the line now with it, seeing, seeing dates and seeing our name on the list, and it's been a long process. Long process. And for anybody watching, what we're talking about is Route 56 North, Palmigusset, getting kind of a complete streets project going, sidewalks up to a certain point, not the full length of the road. Ideally, sidewalks on both sides coming out of Miles, to your point. And I know certainly baseball has been apprised of this. That could change the way parking works at Marshfield. So, yeah, big project.
Right. And the entrance of Miles Road, too, can be like it is. Has to be changed.
Yep. Yep.
Thank you for that.
Yep. All right, I'm going to move on. It's been on here forever, Under Old Business TA Evaluation. I'm going to take the hit on this one this week. I was, I've been really under the weather and did not get, I have gotten everything from everyone, but I did not get you the documentation in time. So, what I'm going to do within the next 24 hours is send out the packet to everybody, including Mike, and you'll be able to write your response, and we'll be able to actually have a conversation, I hope, the next meeting. Old Business 011, the Census Bureau, I know this had to go to somebody else first, right?
It went to the assessor's office. It went to a couple of different offices there. This is their 10-year check to make sure no portions of the town have been annexed by another town.
Okay. Except I think one was just recently.
10 years ago, yeah. We had a little piece that went to Paxton.
Paxton.
Yeah. So, nothing has changed in this 10-year cycle.
Okay.
We had a good decade, so what the...
Is there still time if we want to give Parsons Town a way to surrounding towns?
So, what we're looking for here is a motion to have the Chair sign the official form. It asks for either the tribal Chair or the top elected official of the municipality. Part of Rutland's bylaws, it's the Chair of the Select Board.
You all have a copy of the document, which is the boundary validation program?
They don't have a copy of that cover sheet, but they have a copy, a copy of the information sheet that goes along with that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to authorize Sheila as the Chair of the Board to sign the 2020 initial boundary validation program for the boundary and annexation survey for the 2020 US Census.
Thank you.
Second.
That's mine.
Oh, it is? Yeah. Any more discussion? And Mike, you said the other... And Mike, you said the other, uh, offices have done their due diligence on this one?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor?
All right.
Aye. Aye. Thank you. All right, under New Business, we've done our presidential primary election warrant and Board of Registerars. Uh, Leah had asked that we do an MMA recap. Uh, she and I attended as well as, uh, Mike. Do you wanna, wanna start it?
Yeah. So part of the MMA, which is the Mass Municipal Association Annual Trade Meeting and, um, annual conference, uh, they provide a lot of worksheet, workshops and opportunities for, um, attendees to, uh, continue learning, learn about new things or, um, common problems or whatever across the state. Um, so the attendees, we generally, uh, try to hit different workshops so that we're able to bring back information that might be useful to the whole town, but we're not all sitting in the same workshop. Um, there are Maya points. Maya is our insurance, our current insurance group. So by attending some of these, we get points that then can be used to offset some of our insurance, um, policy-
We get credits for it.
Yeah, we get credits for it. So, um, I just wanted to go briefly over kind of, I think bringing back this information is important. It's not great for us to just kind of hold on to it. Um, it seems like a lot of other towns and cities do this, have a brief recap of, you know, kind of these, I went, this is what I went to, this is kind of the topic, the main takeaway that I got from it or whatever. So, um, I went to a few different learning sessions. I went to a sharing services, solutions for small towns. I thought that was, we do a lot of regionalization already here in town. Um, this one focused on police in, um, Blandford and Chester, Western Mass. Um, but they also did Danvers and surrounding North Shore communities for IT infrastructure sharing, which I thought was an interesting prospect. Um, I actually talked with Council on Aging last week about potential sharing services of the transportation, um, which I know Nancy talked to Secretary Chen today about. So, um, it's kind of thinking outside the box that there's the big hits that we kind of always think of for regionalization, but there's a lot of other opportunities. So if other boards, commissions, department heads can continue to kind of think about those opportunities. Um, it doesn't necessarily mean that we, Rutland becomes the hub for that. Um, in some cases for the IT infrastructure, there's some cases where there's a town or city that is the hub for it. Um, in some cases, it's the Regional Planning Commission is the hub for it. So there's a lot of different ways to, to look at it and manage it. Um, another one that I went to was Use Your Voice, Public Speaking and Civility in Local Government. Um, it was, that was probably the most crowded one of the sessions that I went to. The room was overflowing, it was a room larger than this and it was overflowing. Um, and a lot of that conversation, a lot of towns do have kind of the, um, m- meeting decorum document that we kind of have. We don't really follow it so strictly. At some of the public hearings we do and at town meeting, we try to, but, um, it was just a kind of a nice, nice to hear that it's something that all the towns and cities are, are aware of and working towards having respectful disagreements and not, um, some of the nastiness. Um, another one that I went to is Housing Production Plans, a visual, uh, for your community's future. The state is really pushing these housing production plans, um, more so because we know that housing is in short supply. And so what that looks like, they're trying to give the towns and, and cities and towns a little bit more ownership of how that looks in their hands. Um, so there was a lot of documentation that anybody that's interested, I can provide. I'd be, I'm interested in working a little bit more with our town planner to see, I know it failed at our fall town meeting, to see what the opportunities are going forward.
I'm just, to follow up on that, see, I'm just interested, have you, I mean, have you worked on a housing production plan?
I have not.
Cause it was just something that the state recommended we not pursue as a town? So I was just curious as to what the response to that-
Yeah.
Would be specifically?
Yeah, so these are just learning sessions that it's just, you know, a lot of different feedback from, you know, different groups, so. Um, and then there was property sustainability, which is protecting municipal assets. I was hoping this would be a little bit different. It was more towards reconstruction, new construction, renovations, um, and facilities, but they were kind of being mindful of, you know, climate change. Look at it as a long-term climate change when you're considering any sort of building work. Um, they were really focused on the building work side of things, but just, uh, how to manage humidity, temperature, um, a lot of things that we're seeing an increase of over the course of the years. Um, and I went to one other learning lab that was, uh, for, um, an update on implementation of safety and health standards for public sector workplaces under OSHA, the new MGL OSHA piece. Um, they have some pretty good resources. I'll pass along to, to Mike and the department heads. Um, they'll do voluntary checks where they'll come out and provide you a list of areas for improvement and they'll work with you to get those, um, not necessarily fund them for you, but it's not a hit against you. Um, so that that way you kind of know where you stand. By doing, by signing up to do a voluntary inspection, you significantly reduce your chances of having an involuntary inspection. Um, and there might be some benefits on the insurance side to say that, hey, we've done this and everything. So I'll pass the info along to Mike who can disseminate it to the department heads.
Thank you. Do you wanna do any of yours? I know you had some really data-heavy, municipal, uni-law kind of ones. Was it anything that was?
Um, I mean, I, the ones I went to were, uh, employee law evals, uh, municipal law updates and then cannabis law updates. I can do a quick, um, employee evals and, um, law updates. That really was just based around the, um, the law side was the new minimum wage law. While municipalities are exempt from minimum wage, a lot of municipalities are working towards getting their low, their entry-level positions to a minimum wage level. Um, that was really the bulk of that one. And then just, um, how the, um, MMA is releasing templates for employee evaluation forms and should we choose to use those going forward or ever evaluate.
Is it for the board or for, uh-
Any employees.
Town administrator to evaluate town police?
Both. Yeah. Um, the really data, real heavy one was from the cannabis update. Um, nothing we didn't hear from Katie Lofman when she was here because she was the presenter, um, along with, um, Commissioner Kay from the Cannabis Control Commission. Uh, and a lot of it has to do with cities and towns that already have an active HCA, uh, host community agreement or, um, an open cannabis-related business. Um, particularly with the, um, uh, community impact fee. Um, the statute allows cities and towns to negotiate a community impact fee for up to 3% of the, of a company's gross, uh, gross income for a calendar year to offset the costs of town-related services. As a result of that, uh, police details, roadwork due to increased traffic and so on from there. Um, back when the statute was originally adopted in, uh, the 2016-ish at the ballot through the, um, initiative, it says in there that cities and towns must be tracking how much money is being spent on cannabis-related industries as a way to justify the community impact fee. And, um, just like the community impact fee, uh, the host community agreement can't last more than five years anyway. Um, so now what the CCC is requiring is that any city in town that has an open cannabis-related business, provide that business annually, um, with that data to say, this is how much money we're spending on, this is how much your community impact actually is, uh, just as a way to justify that, um, agreement there. It's not renegotiable during the course of the HCA, but it can come up again after the five-year term is done. That was the real big thing that a lot of people ask questions on. Again, we don't have that issue because we don't have an open one yet and we were planning to do that anyway. It's kind of just like Commissioner Kay said, um, the statute required cities and towns to start doing this back in 2016 and they have been required to do it every year since. So it shouldn't be any additional work to them because they were supposed to be doing it anyway and now they're just copying it and giving it. Um, so there was some miscommunication there that this was an extra work to be done when, in reality, it's not. Um, and just the other stuff that they said there were really just, um, updates that the CCC is starting to issue regulations for, um, drive-throughs at these establishments, uh, as well as home delivery service. Um, particularly with the, uh, the regulations on fees for a home delivery service. You can only charge a fee or prohibit if you choose to for a delivery service that initiates in your town. There's nothing a community could do to stop a out-of-town delivery service from coming into town to deliver a product. But you can't go the other way around. The, um, so that was, uh, one of the other things they said there. And the last thing was just, um, just a comment that we should maintain a good working relationship with whoever we're, um, in actual host community agreement negotiations with when it comes time to doing the community meeting. Um, in order to obtain an HCA, uh, companies are required to do a community meeting. It's like a public meeting, but it's initiated by the company, not the town, therefore it's not an official public meeting. But just getting the information out there, working with the, uh, whoever we're in negotiations with to make sure that they have an adequate space to do it. Uh, there was a case that was cited where, uh, an applicant used their basement with a sandwich board sign on their front lawn as the, uh, way to ho- house their meeting. The sandwich board was on the front lawn, the meeting was in the basement. And so the public was technically invited to it because if you drove by, you saw the sign, but it's not really where you'd expect a meeting that the public's eligible to attend to. So just working with them to make sure that the adequate information gets out there. The, um, last thing that was brought up in that one, uh, was there has been nothing issued in terms of official regulations yet, but the Commonwealth through this Cannabis Control Commission, CCC, uh, will be doing pilot programs for its 7 to 11, um, cafes across the Commonwealth. The first will be in North Adams, um, in which a person can go and consume cannabis-related products at this establishment. They're not allowed to smoke inside, so, uh, cause a lot of the confusion there was it'd be like a, like a hookah bar where you could go and smoke inside. There, that is not allowed as a way to appease the fire marshal there. So there has to be some type of outdoor seating allowed where they could smoke cannabis products outside and could consume cannabis products that are edible inside. Um, they made a big point to say you can't say cannabis-infused food because per Massachusetts law, any, a brownie at a bake sale is considered food, or just a brownie in general is food. The moment a cannabis-related product enters that brownie, by law, it's no longer considered food. Reason being is food codes come from federal statutes, when, of which marijuana is still federally illegal. So Massachusetts passed a law saying any food-related product that has marijuana products in it is legally not considered food. Otherwise, a health inspector or health agent, whenever they would go do their annual inspections on an establishment that saw marijuana food would have to shut them down because of the food regulations come at the federal government level.
Yeah. It's interesting to see the state pretzel their way into this mess.
I-
It's unbelievable.
I'm just sitting here thinking, what do they serve in North Adams? You're not smoking and you're not eating.
You can eat a marijuana-infused brownie, it's just not considered food.
Oh.
So it's not subject to health, Board of Health regulations because it is not, it is legally not a food.
Oh, dear.
It's a consumable, right?
Just out of curiosity, if it's not considered food, it's not subject to Board of Health regulations, can you make like the worst brownie ever with all sorts of ingredients that aren't food and just sell it to the public?
That is the next part of that too. It has to be prepackaged from an off-site distributor and purchased by that establishment.
Okay.
Oh, I can't.
Or, or licensed manufacturer.
Licensed manufacturer.
Okay.
Yes. So, um, it just has to be prepackaged food. But again, it's not subject to any Board of Health or Health inspections there because it is legally by Massachusetts statute not a food if it has marijuana in it.
Well, glad you learned something.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's gonna be super useful.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, on mine, so, you know, for years, we have really tried to maximize our Maya points in order to get money back for the cost of, of having people attend, um, this conference. And it's really hard to sometimes make objective what you get out of it and whether, you know, you, you kind of get your money's worth. So we've always tried to do that, which means they are not all pearls. Um, one of the ones I went to, it was for Maya points, which is great, um, but it was regarding employee health programs. And I was really hoping we could jumpstart some programs that we've done in the past where people were doing a walkie club, things like that. Um, we really need an employee who wants to take some initiative and, and really get that started. Unfortunately, the program that I went to itself wasn't offering a lot of that. She was, she was an excellent presenter. She was telling us a lot about what was going on in her community up in Vermont and it really wasn't things that we could have activated here. It was just a little bit more than, than we are capable of right now. Um, the second one I would like the board to maybe consider talking about, uh, during budget season was actually fascinating, although a little frustrating for me, and it was about funding parks and recreation. Um, and what was fascinating was that the presenters that were there, and actually I was there with another Holden Select Board member who is looking at doing what they were talking about, which was pulling recreation as much as it could out from under the levy. We did that. We did it about 15 years ago because we had to, because we were in a poor financial position, because we couldn't afford it, because we were, you know, at the phrase you just used about turning ourselves into pretzels, trying to figure out how to figure out to keep, to keep recreation going, but get it out from under the levy. Um, I would personally say in a healthy town, you see a combination of things. You see programs that are self-funded, but you don't necessar- necessarily see a recreation director whose entire, um, salary is funded by program fees that, you know.
I mean, it just, you know, I think we're going with this, maybe we could, um, have Mike take a look at some of the communities that do it the best.
Yeah.
Come up with some best practices of what's common and see what we can do or at least have a discussion that's a starting point.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I'm, you know, it's hard to say with best practices because the programs are all so varied in size. I do think Sterling does a really good job. They're, they're a good community to look at. They have a robust recreation program. Um, we know that Northboro does as well. They do a really amazing brochure every, every season, so we, we've got some great ones. It was just interesting to have Holden sitting there saying, yeah, we're, we're looking to do exactly what you guys did 15 years ago. And I'm sitting there saying, if you don't have to, I don't know that it's the healthiest way to go. Um, it's really placing such a burden on a recreation department that, to the point where it might not be able to provide those services to, to its community. That was me. So that was two. The last two that I went to were fascinating and I really walked out with, um, what was, I think, highly valuable information. The first, and, you know, Anita left, I do know that both Anita and Damian watch our meetings and we can, I talked to Mike earlier today. We can have more conversations with her. But it was very specifically in regards to, um, open meeting law. Um, and that the current Attorney General's Office is really taking a strong stance on what agenda postings and what minutes need to look like. To the point that, uh, something along the lines of, and we talked about this, you know, something that worked towards the future, TA general updates, somebody could question because they need to be able to look at the agenda and see exactly what we're gonna be talking about, word for word, every single thing. So I really think, and it's not just us, and, and really Anita can take the lead on this, um, to reach out to all of our boards, committees, commissions, to let them know that these agendas need to have a lot more, um, specificity than we've had in the past. Going along with that, same exact thing was said, uh, in regards to minutes, that you should be able to read minutes and it's like you were there. Um, this is getting easier because people can go back, look at video, things like that. But the minutes themselves as the public record, the public document, you know, Tamika, that's so, it's all on you, I apologize. Um, but, but it was fascinating to listen to that the AG's office is taking a very hard stance on this and that, and that some of our minutes just really wouldn't meet standard anymore. Um, and, you know, for years, people used to tell us, including these same lawyers, that when there is a discussion, you can put in the minutes, discussion ensued and then, of course, you recognize the vote. But now it's no, we need to know what the discussion was and who said what. Um, the other thing about open meeting, and we can have a discussion about this, but I think we need to do it. Um, it came up that, um, uh, the use of social media has become a concern. We can help solve this problem and, and Mike, maybe you can let us know soon where this is. You know, we still don't have our computers in front of us and I think now we, we're at six, seven months.
I met with Paul today.
Oh, okay. Um, but one of the things they said was particularly for boards and commissions that are meeting and are, uh, are being shown live on cable or YouTube or whatever they're doing, when people are getting text messages, getting emails, getting whatever, and they are reading them to themselves, but they are in an open meeting and the rest of the meeting can't, um, get that information and doesn't know that it's coming, that we can actually be in violation of open meeting law. So what I'd like to ask the board to think about, uh, and we can revisit this at the next meeting, it's not something we would vote on tonight anyway, is to think about whether you have the technology that would allow you to set your phone so that your family members, anybody that's important to you, can do an emergency bypass that they can call in or text in and that you're aware that that would, would be the only information you'd be able to sort of get from your phone during a meeting that's going on and you would then leave the table at that point in order to take that call or, or respond to that text or respond to that email. Um, they were pretty, they were pretty, uh, very- they were pretty, uh, very, they were specific about it. They were specific and they were very black and white as well, and said this really was an area of concern.
Yeah, I think though that too, what you've seen to kind of use as an example, jumping point is what they're trying to avoid is if you and I have a laptop or, you know, sitting here and somebody is making a public comment, us discussing it back and forth without having the discussion from the board.
Well, if they went so far with that, that they even said two board members who leaned back and had an aside would actually be in violation of open meeting law. But then the other example they gave, which I thought was fascinating was again, because your meetings are public, uh, and being shown live, that someone could be sitting at home and essentially being involved in the meeting could then respond within the meeting, within a text, but not everyone would know what that person was saying. So they're essentially having a back and forth. They're not physically there. And yet what they are saying is being addressed to one or multiple board members. So I.
Yeah, I think there's simple ways we can probably address that without, I, I'm, I'm not sure the technological capabilities. I'm certainly not tech savvy of having my phone allow certain people to be able to, I mean, I have an infant daughter at home. I want to make sure if there's an issue that I can.
No, I know. I, I had the same thing when I started.
I think if maybe we can, Mike, maybe you can take a look at what the options are. Maybe as a board, if we can agree to at least in principle, have a policy and limit ourselves in terms of what
Yeah.
those, those issues are. I know it's become an issue because we, we do have a complaint. The board has an open complaint for a, open meeting violation right now, uh, because of text messages. So we just want to make sure that we have something at least that we can agree on in principle that, you know, covers those bases.
Yeah. I mean, I, you know, obviously the, the bypass thing is an option if people can figure it out. Um, again, having that sort of agreement where your phones are not anywhere on the table. And it's funny, you know, even people out in the audience, they can't necessarily see what we have in front of us in the table. Like, we always have our phones kind of right here. I, I once know I'll look stuff up. Um, and so, yeah, well, it's something we'll have to revisit. We'll bring it up at the next meeting. We'll try to figure something out. Um, Mike, if you feel like it's a policy that could be drafted even for a first look.
Okay.
Um, we're gonna maybe go that route. The last one I went to, um, was in regards to social media and social media policies. Also something we should probably take a second look at and really, um, beef up. It was fascinating because the, um, the law firm that was there, uh, and the community that was acting as moderator was situat. So anybody who wants to look it up, um, situat had a very specific problem, uh, with, yeah, with, um, actually employees who were being threatened on social media. And, and by the way, the situat situation was, I think, extreme. Um, however.
Say that.
However, they focused very heavily on the protection of the employees. They actually left any elected officials sort of to the side and said, look, you guys are kind of on your own. We can't tell you what to do. Yeah, but, um, but protection of employees was huge. Um, and the social media policies and the way a town presents itself and where its policies stand and where its requirements are in all of its posts, um, became a very, uh, long conversation. It was a really well-attended, um, seminar. Kind of like one of yours. They could have doubled the room and it would have been full. They had to turn people away. The presentation that they gave is actually up on the MMA site. So maybe if you want to bring it up at a staff meeting.
Okay.
Um, I think it was well worth it. It, it was really, uh, in this day and age, knowing what we know about, about social media and, and, uh, some of the things that are going on, they, they were really, I thought, proactively and positively concerned about the well-being of employees. So.
Yeah. I mean, I didn't, obviously I didn't go to that one.
Right.
Um, because I didn't talk about it. But one of the things too is there's a lot of recent, uh, AG decisions and court rulings, uh, regarding social media. Um, and it's just constantly changing because social media is constantly changing. Um, with new apps and new different types of platforms there. Um, particularly with, um, new regulations on, um, if you have a Facebook page where you identify yourself as an official, um, anything that's posted on that a page is considered a public record, the comments, the posts. Um, if there's a messaging format for just that particular page, um, those messages are considered a public record, uh, and prohibitions on blocking people, um, in certain cases too. So just different, um, ever-changing stuff there. So I think just going over those social media policies, just in general, would probably be a good idea, just with how often that changes.
Yeah, thank you.
One other thing I got, not from any of the sessions I attended, but one of the other meetings that we went to was a lot of cities and towns do do the, um, liaison ship that we sometimes do and sometimes don't do, have the board, um, have a point of contact, uh, to us, other boards and commissions in town, and how that has really facilitated relationships in, um, working relationships. Uh, so it's something I would like to kind of revisit. I struggle going back and forth because I think it can be very beneficial, but I think that we need to have a a plan for how it's going to look. And I've felt like it, we've kind of just been a free-for-all where if we can kind of spend a little bit of time, maybe even as we work towards, uh, updating our master plan and everything and having more direct feedback and conversations with the boards and commissions that I think it would be really beneficial, but it needs to be done thoughtfully.
I think too, like, to echo your point, I mean, the, the few meetings we've had that have been joint meetings with the different boards, I thought have been very productive. Um, and I think maybe some more of those, at least maybe a couple of times a year to touch base
Yeah.
um, with our other boards and commissions to share ideas, um, and to get feedback, even if it's not as so far as liaison thing, because I think we had a little difficulty with everyone being committed to, you know, ten meetings a week. Maybe if it's just, we have those joint meetings, we let the public come in, uh, we have those conversations. I think that might be really good.
We actually just got a request today for a joint meeting, so we're looking to see when we can start scheduling that with the RDIC.
Great. Good ideas.
All right. Thank you.
Free for representing.
Yeah, it was very good to hear. Very good to hear. Um, all right. So thank you for that. We'll take some action items from, from several of these things and move forward. Um, I'm gonna move along with your business. So, uh, under zero nine four, the Ware River Watershed Letter, it had a revision a couple of days ago. I do have the final copy here. I think you all have it as well. Um, this is the subject that came up when, uh, Kim and Ann were here as well. Major concerns about what's going on with the, uh, Ware River Watershed Advisory Committee and, and DCR and the actions they were considering. Uh, I think, do you want to share?
Well, yeah, if I could, I could give you a synopsis of what brought us to this and what specifically the letter is requesting. So as you all know, uh, that we are participants in the Ware River Watershed Advisory Committee, and, uh, Mr. Dick Williams is our, uh, primary representative for that. And in November, specifically in the November, uh, meeting minutes, it's, it states that a new policy by DCR is being proposed for DCR roads in the watershed. So when they talk about the watershed, they're talking about our prison camps. Okay. Everything from the State Park to Berry Falls, a thousand plus acres, thousands of acres. All DCR internal roads will be closed to unauthorized vehicle traffic from January through September. So this is the crux of, uh, people's concerns. Uh, the gates will be closed and locked. Some DCR gates will be unlocked and open from October through December to accommodate permitted hunters. Uh, another issue that is, uh, under proposal by DCR is to downsize the size of a, an engine you can use on Long Pond. So nothing more than twenty-five horsepower. So that would, uh, slow down the, a lot of the boating traffic on Long Pond. But, uh, what has gotten people's attention is the closing, the locking of the gate for nine months in there. And I wrote down a couple of notes if I could be, if you'd mind. That our citizens, we, we use the camp. We call it the prison camps. We use it year-round for hiking, exploring. We did the perambulation on Old Cobrook Road with this troop right here, uh, in the prison camps. The gates are open. It's accessible. We drove in there with our cars. Uh, I used to drive in there with my Jeep. Uh, there's a big, uh, contingency of horsebackers and off-road bicycle folks hiking. Uh, there's concrete ruins in there that can be explored. There's historical burial grounds more towards the Berry side. Uh, scenic beauty. As far as I know, it's the only place around where we talk about going off-road or if you were talking about being, uh, going out to be out with, with nature. Um, growing up, we always had full access to the, uh, the prison camps where they got dirt bikes there. Uh, you can't use, can't use, uh, dirt bikes or ATVs there, I understand anymore. Um, but back then, growing up, it was still part of the watershed and, and I submit that the world didn't stop turning because we used the prison camps back then. And I don't think much has changed to, to take a drastic measure of closing off the gate access to the, the community in there. And the community, uh, who encompassed the prison camps includes us, Barry, OCam, and Hubbardston, and all of them have a seat on the Ware River Advisory also. And my concern is that once it's locked, it was locked after nine eleven, after all the concern immediately after nine eleven, everything shut down. And police details at every watershed and every, every reservoir. And it took years to try to start to readjust for that. And I, I fear that once this is gone, once we lose that identity of having access, uh, with the prison camps, we're not going to get it back. It's going to be tough to get it back. Um, the good news is that this is a proposal. This is a proposal by DCR. They have a newly seated commissioner. His name is Commissioner Montgomery. He was just appointed last week, uh, or within the coming, uh, coming weeks, and he is taking the measure under advisement. And Senator Goby, who had been on top of things, just reported tonight. And we thank her for that, uh, that the commissioner has decided to, uh, for a little bit of a stay, up to maybe six months, I've heard, to, uh, to address all the information, uh, regarding. I, I, I was gonna say both sides, but I haven't heard another side. The only side that I've heard is everybody who's saying, hey, please, please maintain our way of life. Leave us alone with all due respect. Um, and just leave the gate open there because I don't believe that it's, it, it creates a, you know, a big concern. Um, but we do appreciate the opportunity to have the conversation with the DCR. And that conversation is coming up on February twentieth at, here at the library at the, at the next meeting. Uh, it may or may not be on their agenda to discuss public comment, but we wanted to, if, if the commissioner was going to take this back for advisement, we wanted to, you know, this is what I'm specifically asking in the letter, is have a position, is to present the commissioner with the town or our board's position as it pertains to the closing of the gates, specifically locking of the gate. And my position is that it should remain status quo, unchanged, open for lawful use. Perambulation, for hiking, horseback riding, et cetera. Okay? Um, and I would ask that each of us opine on how you feel about it. And assuming that everybody is in concurrence with, uh, Senator Goby and Representative Ferguson and, uh, the constituents in there, that we sign a simple letter pleasantly worded to, uh, the new commissioner saying, this is simply the position of the Rutland Select Board and thus the town of Rutland, that we would like the access to the prison camps to remain unfettered in there. Um, we're not addressing the Long Pond issue right now, but right now, uh, it's, that letter right there is specific to access to the camps. So I ask that it be included in the binder for everyone's review. Uh, we can have discussion and then I would like to make the motion uh, for the board to sign the letter to be presented to the DCR Commissioner, uh, either before through the TA or at the February twentieth meeting here at the library.
And that was at the suggestion of Senator Goby was for the board to take a position on this.
Right.
So can I get a second for discussion? Because he just made a motion about this letter and then people can talk about what they think.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
I guess my question is, and Senator Goby has worked really hard with the commissioner to kind of lobby for at least time to review the decision. Um, before, I think, and this is just a suggestion, before we take a position, I'd like to hear what the justification is from the state for making the decision. Whether it's public safety or it's just staffing.
I could tell you, uh, but we have Mr. Williams here.
I was telling.
I did highlight the, this is from the minutes too. Uh, from the watershed protection standpoint, the A main goal is to protect the most critical resource first.
I believe a comment was made that there had been some misuse, that there were some illegal ATVs running through, that there were some people. Yeah, that is always gonna happen.
The, I guess if we have the commissioner coming out anyhow and we're meeting with the commissioner and we have time, um, I would like to have that back and forth dialogue with the commissioner before we, we take a strong position, just to kind of be able to not have that preconceived notion coming in. I, I just want to hear what the commissioner would have to say, what the issues are. And then we, if we have the six-month period, we can take, we could sign the letter if that's how we feel after we hear from the commissioner.
Well, see, keep in mind that we just found out about the six-month push today.
Right.
Um, my concern is that the commissioner doesn't come here with every meeting, right? This is our opportunity, this is probably our opportunity to, uh, convey some sort of, uh, inference to the commissioner that this is an important issue with our town.
This also is not our meeting. This is a Ware River Watershed Advisory Committee meeting in conjunction with DCR. We will be guests. We may or may not be recognized.
We have a seat.
Well, the town has a seat.
The town, no, the select board has a seat.
Well. The select board has a seat, but a select board member is not on it. Do you see, you know what I mean?
It could be. I think there was, but it is the, the members of the advisory committee specifically being the Barry Select Board, Hubbardston Select Board, OCam, and Rutland Select Board.
Right.
Historical societies, trout, et cetera. Uh, but there's a reason, sorry, yeah. There's a reason why it's the select board. And I, I, I get what you're saying Mitch, but he's, he's, might not be coming back. He's going back to Boston to make the decision. This is an opportunity in, in two weeks. Um, I, I think the way the, the letter, if you looked at it, it's gently worded that we're only asking that things remain status quo right now. Just remain, remain at the status, uh, the current level. Um, it would be nice, before we go up to the microphone up there, to, to know what the people behind me say, because I, I fully intend to walk up, to go up to the microphone and convey gently, uh, what I just said to you all in there. But it would be nice to know that I speak for the, for the group. Um, or at least the majority of the group. Or I would like to think that this would be something that we all agree upon, because if you talk to the people in, in the constituency, everybody's like, what? You know, it's, it's, and, and it's not like they're saying, oh, we have to close it off, uh, because they, they agreed to open it October, November, December for the pheasant hunting and, and hunting. Uh, but this is the, like the crux of your spring and your summer and, and things like that. And it's, and that's not saying that you don't have access, but they're closing off road in there. So if you wanted to go to the ruins, you would have to park at one twenty-two at the OCam line and hoof it in there.
And that was my other question is, I mean, you still have access to the sites, just not the roads.
That's right.
So basically what they were saying, if you look at the proposal, it was that hiking, biking, dog walking, I don't even think they were, you know, pushing that off, were all allowed because those people would simply go around
Right.
the gates. Um, what came up from a Barry, um, community group that I thought was interesting, and you kind of touched on it, is this is a massive piece of land. And when it comes to some of the historic sites, we have people who are not physically capable of hiking or biking to some of these sites.
Sure.
So for DCR to have taken the tack that, well, it's okay for a couple of months for hunters, but for anyone else looking to do other forms of recreation outside of those few months, where they also might need to drive to something that was specific location-wise, I felt like that was really short-sighted of them. I, I.
Why is it a secret? Why does it need to be a secret?
A secret?
You know, if, if evidence closed off, you wouldn't know
Yeah.
what's in there. And we took all those scouts in there.
Yeah.
Who was gonna walk, you're not gonna walk with them. That's miles in.
Well, I think the other.
It's a danger, you know?
I think the other thing is, I don't know how often you've seen this in some of the other communities, but there has tended to be a reaction, um, and we saw this, and, and this really hits home for me with the mountain biking. There tends to be a reaction that when a certain very small minority of people does something truly wrong, right? They're misusing the property, they're misusing the land, they're acting in ways that are technically illegal. The knee-jerk reaction is to tighten down restrictions on everybody as opposed to fixing the problem, which really generally is a handful, if that, one person, two people who are misusing the property and ruining it for everyone. This seems to have been that.
I just think, you know, is it, is maybe a possible justification for that though, that they don't have the resources to go after those? And I mean, you said there's, there's really very limited staffing. There's no.
It's not a high-crime area. It's the Rutland prison camps.
Well, they put up cameras for mountain biking specifically, yeah.
That's what game wardens do.
I would just also, and I agree with you Jeff, I would just like to hear what the commissioner says about the justification and kind of what that back and forth can be prior to really taking a position without hearing from him directly why this is, this is gonna be occurring.
Well, it sounds like he's already met halfway. He said he's, he's not coming saying, this is what I'm gonna do. He says, I'm going to, it's a proposal before him.
Yeah.
That he has to be the, uh, the decider on there, based on that. I, I.
I think Senator Goby's post alluded to him looking for input.
That's right. And she specific, when we talked to her, she specifically said that the opinion of the town would weigh heavily upon him.
Of course.
And in further, furtherance, besides Rutland, I think we should also, TA to TA, reach out to the other towns and ask for their opinion or to opine, leading up to, uh, these meetings that affects them also. So, but I, I still, I still feel the same way, uh, respect your opinion. Um, I think if you, if you look at the wording of the letter, it is gently worded, uh, so that we're not demanding, we're asking that things remain right now, very similar to the six, six-month hike. similar to the six, six-month hiatus. I think it's worded such, if you wanted to change it a little bit. But I would, when I go up to the microphone, I would like to know that I have a, some sort of a platform to, to jump off, that this is the belief of the town.
Yeah, I think, I mean, the wording is fine. It's really just a question, when we take this vote about the letter, is whether or not you believe that the gates should remain open for car access as they have been. So I think you use status quo.
Up or down? I'd like to see an up or down. It's, I believe it should be open, as it is right now, as it is today.
Yeah. I just, I just don't feel like we have enough information.
Okay.
One of the concerns that has come up in discussions that I've had are the, when we do have police calls for this area, it's normally because someone got lost in that area while they were hiking. So having someone park farther away and then walk to get to the site to see things like the prison ruins, that would be my main concern there. But if we do get a call there, a lot of the times, it's someone got lost.
I would also suggest that there's more than one hunting season, other than the fall bird season. There's other hunting seasons throughout the year.
If these roads are closed, do emergency vehicles have access or means of access?
They'll have those.
They have keys.
Okay.
It's more the, it's more the, the people who would normally drive around than hiking their way through.
And they might overdo it trying to get to...
This relates to public's, the community's access. The law-abiding community's access.
I mean, I guess, the, if they're making, taking Senator Goby's recent update from today out of the picture, if they were proposing or considering a new policy and hadn't come to the towns and said, hey, this is, they didn't really reach out to the towns, right, to talk feedback for that, then it can be the, I see it as the town taking a stance, saying, hey, if you're considering this, we're kind of not okay with it. And then letting, letting them know that the town is taking a stance. And I think the letter is worded in such a way that it doesn't shut down communication or opportunity for, for their discussion, but it...
Right. I just want to know the justification as to why they're looking at it. I mean, that's my only thing, is, you know, we could go in there and they could say something totally that we didn't expect that is going to change our position.
It's a working document. I mean, things might change.
I, I mean...
But right now, I'm just asking that we have a position to, to address to the gentleman from Boston, an important gentleman, who's coming here to hear what y'all want. And that's exactly what the advisory committee is for. And that's why we have Mr. Williams seated there as our, as the Select Board's representative, so.
I obviously can't speak for the current commissioner, but the historical reasoning and the precedent for everything that's been done, whether it's been Quabin, us, Weir River Watershed, Wachusen River Watershed, has been protection of the watershed. That is the overarching reason.
Sure, right, of course.
And then it becomes...
And that's a noble cause.
Of course.
It is. But then it becomes a question of where is that protection becoming such that the public no longer has access to the lands it technically owns? And I think that has always been the issue. You know, people talk about the Quabin all the time. You can't take a canoe on the Quabin, but you can take a diesel-powered motorboat, a certain size. And people question that. People question sometimes DCR, who will go in and do logging, and they question sometimes their reasoning behind that, and whether that has a, an impact, a negative impact. So I, I think that's where people tend to, right, that's where they're...
I'm not disagreeing at all. I just, you know, I'd like to hear, I guess, more information straight from DCR.
Okay. Well, I, sir?
Yes?
Just to throw it in there, also, we have a historic, the prison camp is a historic district area. Also, how does the ADA people get in there? They can't be, you know...
Well, that's kind of what, yeah, I think...
And to me, if you're having something like that, you should leave it open, especially for them. And you'd be surprised, the other night, when we had the meeting, how many people said, I can only walk, you know, maybe 100, 200 feet, and that's it. I want to be able to drive into the...
Drive through.
So...
Some of those vistas are beautiful. I mean, I know, I bike it, and it's, it's a bike, right? It's a, you know, 12 miles, whatever, to get from one end to the other. And it's, it's tough, it's going to be tough for people that don't have that level of mobility.
Exactly. They are starting to, the kayak and canoe ramp on the Berry-OKM line right there, they're going to eliminate that and push it away. But, you know, all of a sudden, they're getting a real pushback on it, because they haven't got another proper place that they can use. And also, I mean, the amount of people that commented about closing the gate, it went off the handle. And Dan, who is the director at Quabin, he's the one that comes to the meeting, he's the one that's doing the pushing on this, he was open for discussion, people for groups, to send in one or two people to talk to him about it and lay it out. And I feel that what you're talking about now, the letter and everything else, not only should go to the commissioner, but also to Dan, so.
Okay. Lastly, friends, I would say that everything I just read off here is from the minutes of the Weir River Advisory Committee. So...
And on that, I hope everybody, I do turn them in, and I'm hoping everybody gets an opportunity once in a while, maybe to take a look at it, you know, at the minutes. But I've done that for, I've been there now 20-something years on that, from the day they opened.
Five horseback riding groups represented, two mountain bike groups, four snowmobile groups, one hunting and fishing group, and the agency that regulates hunting and fishing, DFG, and the Asna Comet Pond Association, Comet Pond. I stand by my motion. Appreciate the second. And ask that we call a vote.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Thank you, sir.
None? Okay, thank you. So, everybody's happy with the letter as it is? I will say, we didn't CC it to some of the agencies, but yeah, let's...
We can CC it to some of the agencies. They'll probably send it to Cameron too.
Yes. Thank you. I plan to be there. I will certainly re-brief the board on there. If things do change, it'll be transparent, and we can adjust accordingly. I would like to see that we reach out to the other affected towns' boards, to see if they would like to opine, either, either through an email, but probably through TA to TA, say, hey, this is, this is how we feel, or we have a concern, just so you know, the letter is self-explanatory. Would you like to opine before we go up? But, or at least let their representative know that this is where we feel, and that the commissioner said that the individual towns' opinions would weigh heavily on his decision.
They reserved the big room for next Thursday? Is that where they...
At the moment, yes, it is. They may cancel.
They may need a bigger room.
Well, that's, they're hoping it's going to be big enough. But...
I don't know, Dick.
I don't, let's put it this way, they did talk about maybe having it in Berry, maybe a Quabin regional.
Okay.
So, we'll see what happens.
They've got vocal groups that are sort of amassing, I think, at this point about this. This really hit a nerve. A lot of people...
We have been told of some media outlets that are planning on coming to the meeting as well.
I think, we're on the right side of this issue. So I, you know, I thank you.
Well, and thanks, Senator Goby, for the work she's done.
Yeah, she's really been on top of this.
And Kim Ferguson has been on top of it also.
Absolutely.
Yep, absolutely.
And keeping us apprised of where they are. So, I thank you all for that, and thank you, Dick. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. We're giving you two minutes on this.
Try to be brief. Try to get us out of here by 9:00.
Oh, my God.
Well, I tried to make it quick here, and I...
No, we appreciate the way you're doing it.
So, thank you again for the opportunity. Beginning of the year, award season, the fire department has firefighter EMT, or firefighter of the year. The police department has an officer of the year. I think it would be nice that the town be able to recognize an individual or individuals for public service excellence. So the proposal that I have before you is the Moses Howe Award for Public Service Excellence. And the purpose of that would be for our town, specifically the board, to recognize a person or persons for exceptional service to the Rutland community. It could be town employees, officers, it could be a member of the public, anybody, anybody who does significant public service that's worthy of some recognition. We picked Moses Howe, as you know, through the last year's events and Law Enforcement Memorial Week, that he is a founding father. He's been identified as a founding father, recognized as Rutland's first law enforcement officer. They had 10 children, including Rutland's firstborn citizen Samuel back in 1719. Of the offices that he held, selectman, esquire, might have been attorney, justice of the peace, an officer in the militia, and constable. He and his family laid arrest, left of us here in the old burial grounds. So the award would carry his name, is my proposal, in there, that it be decided by the Select Board, preferably annually. And the way it would manifest itself would be through public record, the vote of the board, and a static wall plaque describing what the award is. And then it would have individual name and year that could be posted in there. That's the short and sweet of it. So I, I think it's, it would be worthy for our board to be able to have a way to recognize somebody with exceptional service. How we pay for the plaque? I haven't got to that part yet. But I think, I'd like to put it out there.
You could have, we had good luck with the signs getting sponsorships.
I don't think it's going to be too much, maybe 100 bucks or what have you. But kind of the hint is that we have Law Enforcement Memorial Day again coming up, May 15th, that I plan to post on another agenda and on something that we could do to continue what we did last year. And perhaps that our board's award could be something that would be presented there. So, but that's the proposal before you. If you have any questions? No?
You like it?
Anybody, Dick. Could be, could be Dick Williams.
No, we have a gentleman in here that works with the DPW. He's been...
Anybody.
He's been in the scouts for so many years.
Okay, so to that point, I think that's my only question.
Yep.
Would you want it to be presented at our meeting prior, the board's meeting prior to town meeting, and then to be announced at town meeting with the approval of the moderator?
There you go.
And make it, I mean, the thing is, that would make it slightly less related to National Public Safety Officers Day, but because you said it was...
Town meeting.
Employees, officials, deserving members of the public, and it wasn't just, because at first, I actually thought it was only public safety officers. But it sounds like you were trying to be more...
I really don't, because if...
And let's do it at the very end of town meeting, so people that come out have to stay and vote on things.
I like that idea better. I don't, yeah, I like that a lot.
So we can't, you know, unless we put it into the bylaws, we couldn't require it to be at town meeting? Hopefully, the moderator would be okay with it.
We also have our own meeting during town meeting, before town meeting.
For it, right, exactly. So we could, yeah.
But I like, I like what you're getting at, and the idea is that, I mean, it's a board's decision upon consensus vote, and then it should be in conjunction with what the other departments do for the officer of the year and...
I like it.
Meritorious service.
I think the only thing I would add is some sort of requirement on the nomination, sort of whether it's a word limit or something, to give people some sense of what you were looking for. Not just, I nominate so-and-so, hand it in. You want some background, you want a reason, you want a little essay.
With, like, a one paragraph, could we say one paragraph?
I don't know, whatever you...
One paragraph limits, just a synopsis would be a good word.
Or one paragraph minimum, I would think.
Paragraph.
If you want to, if you want to hear about, if you want to hear about the person, yeah.
So what I was getting at is that the nominations could be from anybody, any citizen.
Yep.
And it's decided upon the board by a consensus vote. I like it.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, one of our goals and objectives that we came up with was kind of continuing to improve the board's relationship with the public and other boards and commissions. Mike has been doing a great job getting kind of Rutland government outside of town hall and the annex. And so it's just another way, Jeff's been doing a lot of community service outreach, public outreach. But it's just another way to kind of show that we're business, but we appreciate what our town does for us also.
And there's a lot of other boards. Princeton has Citizen of the Year, which is awarded specifically by the Select Board.
Holden has it.
Oh, yeah. So this would be something that, fantastic, you know, saved a kitten from a tree. I mean, I mean, you, you know, somebody did something that's really exciting. Ideally, would be for the previous calendar year, but it doesn't have to be. It's up to discussion of the board, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. So...
So can we get a motion to proceed with this, and kind of whatever else we need to do? So I think the next thing would be a form or some sort of announcement of how nominations would be submitted with deadlines?
Okay.
If we're going to move ahead with this.
So, so it'd be a motion for endorsement, and then we can get the process going after it?
To, to circle back with the, with the board on what we did, because there were two tweaks to the, the attachment in there, changing it from Police Week to Town Meeting, which I like.
A motion for endorsement just means that you approve of the overall idea, and then you come back later on with the details behind it.
I'll make a motion for endorsement of the proposal for a Moses Howe Award for Public Service Excellence.
Second.
Excellent. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yours.
Appreciate it.
I don't think we have any correspondence tonight.
Nope.
Is there any other business to come before the board? Hearing none?
Uh, Joe.
Oh, my gosh, Joe. No.
Would you like some written correspondence on Route 56, or do you want to have it at the next meeting for the discussion?
I think at the next meeting, if it's ready, or even if it has to be the meeting after that, we're probably looking for the update, a rough schedule, what things are looking like post-meeting. Maybe we should be doing this after, right, the CMMPO, CMRPC tip update meeting, because otherwise, right, majority of your update would be, well, we're waiting to see what happens at the meeting.
I forwarded on to the administrator the most recent correspondence we have, which is dated January 10th, which is very up to date.
Okay.
Most of it is linked to the dam, which we've taken care of. That was the big stock log for us, the dam.
Yep.
So if you wouldn't mind, Mike, make that available?
Sure.
And then we, to the board, and we can review it if you see fit the next, just put it on the agenda, and we'll be ready.
Okay. Great.
So were you in here just for that?
No, I was very excited about the award.
Seriously, maybe we could make an effort to accommodate our division heads.
I usually do. I didn't know why he was here.
Sitting here.
Sometimes he's just interested. I actually thought he was here because I was in trouble for parking in the new parking lot.
He's got better things to do.
It's open?
It's open.
Okay. I enjoyed pulling him. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.